Unless you want a pencil, that's a pencil. So, yeah.
So we did.
Like, what did we do?
The Kana standards.
But I have a friend who does a with students every year, almost every year, and she recommends.
Hey, guys, we have reached, if you guys can hear me, we have reached the 6:00 PM hour. I see three commissioners yet, I think I see three commissioners at city offices. We've got Annette Madrid and Noel appearing remotely, which means we've got a quorum. Amy, have you received any information about any other commissioners that would be appearing remotely?
Commissioner Bande will not be in attendance, so everyone that is accounted for is here.
Okay, so I think it's just Jen, Ms. Jen Nordstrom, that is not with us this evening, or is she there in person? I can't say, oh, there she is, okay. Sorry, on my screen, you're a little apution. So with that said, I think we've, we've got a quorum and we can get started tonight. I think we've kind of have the possibility of a longer conversation, so I'd like to get underway. Good evening, we're calling to the, calling to order the planning commission for the city of Carlton Monday, May 17, 2023. It is 6:00 PM, we are in Zoom and in person. We will start with a roll call, Amy, if you wouldn't mind doing so, please.
I thought I had it up.
Commissioner Jeremiah? Can you hear? Commissioner Jeremiah, are you in attendance?
Oh, yes, sorry, I couldn't hear you, it's, it's cutting out a little bit, yes, present.
Okay, Commissioner Nordstrom?
Present.
Commissioner Terrell?
Here.
Commissioner Madrid?
Here.
Commissioner Gek?
Here.
And Chair Stewart?
President accounted, thank you.
Thank you.
First item on our agenda is the approval of the April 17, 2023 minutes. Starting at page two on our agenda continues only for page two. If anybody has any questions, comments, concerns, or proposed revisions, now is the time to make, make that known. Otherwise, I will accept a motion and a second to approve.
I move to approve.
Second.
There's a first, there's a second, all in favor, raise those beautiful palms. Excellent, that looks like it passes unanimously, excellent, thank you, everybody. We will open with an opportunity for citizen comments, I see there's a couple of people out in Zoom land. Is there anybody at city offices, Amy, that would like to make a public comment on an item that is not on our agenda this evening?
Everybody in attendance before the action items.
Understood, anybody out in Zoom land? I see there's a couple of different individuals who would like to make a comment as a Carlton citizen, not on any agenda item this evening. Hearing none and seeing none, we will move on to our next item, but if you are out in Zoom land or anybody else in the community you'd like to make a comment, it's an opportunity to follow the statewide planning goal number one, which is citizen involvement. We encourage anybody in the community who has any comments or concerns to bring that to our attention or do the same for the city council. First item on our agenda this evening is a discussion of an extension of a smaller breakout discussion that was had about having a planning commissioner liaison to the city council. There was a small meeting between myself, Commissioner, co-chair Terrell, and two of the city staff members, and we discussed the viability and the benefit that would come to the commission as well as to the council by having a regularized participation in a liaison between the planning commission and the council. One of the ideas that was postulated was, given that we've got seven members, at least six present here today, that we would have the duty of splitting and each commissioner would have two times per year, but they would serve as a representative for a meeting for the city council, that's usually somewhere between two and three hours is my understanding of what those meetings would entail. So it's a few extra hours of our commitment, but an opportunity to share both with the planning commission and from the planning commission towards the council, anything that's going on. Naturally, this wouldn't be in a voting role, this would simply be in an observational component. There may be a couple of circumstances that in, in conjunction with advice from city council where there may be limitations to avoid any conflict between matters that may be before the commission and before the council, they would be addressed on a one-off basis, but we can open it for a discussion at this time as to any comments, concerns, or questions on that idea and how we might carry that forward. Open the floor for discussion at this point.
This is Commissioner Madrid, I'm just gonna jump in and say I really would be in favor of what Anthony just proposed. I think sharing that role and responsibility among planning commission members would serve the purpose very well, not only for the planning commission liaison interface with the council, but also for the council with the planning commission. So I would strongly be in favor of sharing it among the sitting members, that's my two cents.
Anybody at city offices or Noel, if you have any comments, you're welcome to do so.
Just to clarify, are you suggesting that we would be assigned a specific date and then report back to the group? Is that what you're asking? I guess I'm not totally clear.
I think that was the general understanding, whether we call it being assigned or whether it's volunteering, you know, there, there are mechanisms for equitable distribution of those things, whether it's a, an online poll or something out that where we have some sort of rank order preference. The idea is that we, we would hopefully be in a position where each member could select a meeting or two meetings through the year, but we would do it, you know, each person gets to select their first priority and then their second priority and then they're, they're delegated based upon who's, who's got availability. That's something that I think that the commission and city staff could work out as far as when those would be. We probably would start with identifying for the succeeding 12 months, the scheduled dates for the city council and then go from there. But the idea is hopefully that there would be a measure of personal volition and not just having it assigned.
Sure, yeah, I, I support that idea as well. I like the idea of having some sort of structure to it and making sure that it's, we're able to rotate through so that it's not maybe the same person every time, but that there's full participation. I know everybody's schedules are different, so maybe that would be a challenge here and there, but having some ability to, you know, choose a couple of priority, high priority dates and, and that, that would work really well for me and I think for this group.
Thank you, Noel, anybody at the city offices have any supplementary comments, questions, concerns?
I think it sounds like a good idea, I think it's, I mean, members of city council attend this meeting and so it might be nice for some of us to be able to attend their meetings.
What I think then, yeah, Suzie, go for it.
So, and I think, as I remember, part of our discussion was we were going to encourage city councillors to actually do the same thing and reciprocally attend our meetings. So I think that's, we're on the same page with that one, that there's some reciprocity in attending meetings.
Yeah, naturally, that decision would be among the individual councillors and the council themselves because we are in the, some, some would say subordinate or at least supportive role as the planning commission. So I think that would be certainly requested that they provide an opportunity, provide a member to participate and as I indicated before, we may have some circumstances where from a conflicts perspective, we would ask that planning commissioning member not to participate or possibly even listen in during a a quasi judicial hearing which may have an opportunity for appeal before the council. We would do that in conversation and consultation with city council, but that is well taken and I, and I acknowledge the fact that whether it's the mayor or Ms. Ward Mullen, there's always an opportunity for them to kind of see what we're doing and try to have best practices on both sides. With that, hearing no other comments, I think the idea would be for us, I don't think it's something that we necessarily need to formalize or approve or move, but I think it would be helpful if we could get the list of the dates for the coming 12 months. Maybe that is something that the Amy or the team could put together and circulate to all of us and next, for the next meeting ahead of our, next time together, everybody put a rank order preference. If, if we had a list of the, you know, the, let's call it July Q2, Q3, Q4, 2023 plus Q1, Q2, 2024, we have a rank order preference and identify the dates that we can't do during those time periods. We can sort of preferentially delegate those meetings and attendance to members of the commission and then if there is a one-off variation that, that, that specific commissioner can trade, quote unquote, trade their time with another person, if an emergency matter comes up every once in a while, schedule issues do pop up. Does that sound okay to everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah, and definitely the longer advance notice we have about what meeting to plan, the easier it is to not have things pop up.
Agreed, agreed, yeah, I, I just, you know, it's the nature of the beast, we, everybody has emergencies or tooth injuries or whatever that pops up. Amy, is that something you wouldn't mind sharing with us over the next 30 days so that we can come prepared to make those assignments in our June meeting?
Not a problem.
Thank you very, very much, and thank you to everybody. I think that's gonna be a good opportunity for us to both give exposure on what the council is doing with the work we send up to them and where possible, increase that, well, it's springtime, so I can use the word, that cross pollination between our collective groups. Next, we wanted to follow up and discuss having a student representative on the Carlton Planning Commission as we will see at pages three and four of our evening agenda and meeting packet under section 2.12.030, this is the most recently updated version of the membership to Carlton Planning Commission. We are fortunate to have, say, for Mr. Bande's appearance today, we've got a full roster of planning commissioners and so we have met a number of the goals that we've established there. We updated some of the residency requirements that were previously, hate to say more lax, but they were less strict before. But one of the things you'll find at subsection J is for an ex officio member, aiming for somebody young, it says under 21 years of age, but I, I think the overarching thought is that we try to involve somebody at the high school level to see if they would come in and serve. The outline here is a 14-month term for a maximum of three times. If you find anybody who's under 21 that can commit to 32 months of anything or more, I would be very surprised. But we wanted to revisit this, there were a couple of ideas that were discussed on how we would approach possibly the government or civics classes at Yamhill Carlton or otherwise reach out to the administrators or the teachers at the school to see if there was anybody that would be recommended, that they could either be approached or some form of marketing or engagement with the school. With that, I will open it up for any comments or suggestions by the lovely compatriots on the commission.
I have, I think, I think this is a great idea. I worry about the terms because you can't get a senior, right? Because they would graduate before this, their term finishes. So you're kind of really narrowing it down. I mean, it would be great to be able to have someone, but I think if there's some flexibility on maybe that being a... So, so one thing that could work, for example, is if, if someone, maybe like a junior in high school get, you know, like, there's a search process for juniors who would then serve their senior year. That would probably be the easiest, the easiest thing, and it does seem like maybe adjusting that window a little bit, so maybe they could attend a first meeting at the end of their junior year and then come in there, you know, for their, their senior year, you're gonna have a really hard time getting them in the summer, I think. But maybe not, but I also like the idea of potentially, if we, I, I like the idea of prioritizing a high school student, but there are students from Yamhill Carlton who've graduated, who actually go to nearby colleges as well. And, and so they, they may still kind of have their formal residence in, in Carlton, but maybe attending Pacific University or Linfield or, you know, where they actually could sort of commute, commute back for a night or something like that. So I think as maybe a second option for recruiting a student, maybe reaching out to the community to ask if there are any college students whose residence is Carlton, but maybe attending a nearby college or university who would be willing to come back.
Both very good ideas, I appreciate it.
I would support everything that Jennifer said. I think key to that is shortening the term, probably making it six months because if you are focusing on a high school student, they're focusing on, you know, their junior and senior years, that's a heck of a time commitment, and I think if you had a six-month term, they could do it for half of the year, not the other half of the year. You'd get a more varied experience available to a larger pool of people. You know, definitely if 21 is for some reason your drop dead cutoff age, you know, you've got a wealth of potentials through Shemecata Community College, and I think I could recommend someone at Yamhill Carlton High School to help with that search. I myself was an Aspire mentor for nine years and Janet Haring Sherman is, is still currently the head of that program. So she could, you know, get the word out at YC either for a high school student or somebody graduating but still in the, in the area who would like to, you know, maybe they're, I mean, not to say that they have to have a degree in this, but if they're going into any kind of business or public relations or international studies or what have you, I'm sure there would be interest, but I think the time commitment is gonna be crucial, like, no one's, no one's gonna sign up for a year and a half. They're just, they just can't at that age. So I would maybe reach out to Janet, who's the head of the Aspire program at Yamhill Carlton High School, and she, if not other faculty members, could probably give us a short list of, of recommendations. And maybe, you know, maybe the city puts a little ad in the paper and says, hey, you know, anybody wanting to do, I'm just throwing the term out there, six months, you know, to build their resume and, and learn how local government works. I think it's an excellent idea.
The other question is, if we are going to the high school, do they have to be from Carlton? Or is this about sort of a teaching experience where, you know, because, I mean, maybe priority goes to Carlton, certainly, but if you're reaching out to the high school, that really narrows it down. So, because, you know, there's Yamhill kids and Carlton kids and, and if it's an educational experience, I don't see the issue with that.
Yeah.
But if it's about understanding their own city government and we are sort of sticking to Carlton residents, then it really limits the pool.
Yeah, I mean, we have, as, you know, appointed or whatever committee persons, ad hoc committee persons, we're volunteers. Our parameters are to have, you know, one of two definitions of residency within the city, but to echo again Commissioner Jennifer's comments, I, I would have no problem if perhaps it was a YC student, if we're sticking with high school and the kid happened to live in Yamhill, I mean, who cares? It's great that they would want to be involved. So I, I would not, I would not have city of Carlton residency be a, be a, be a deal breaker.
And as the, the language of our relevant code section does not have any specific residency requirements there, so I, I, I think your point is well taken, Commissioner Madrid.
Can I add to that? Um, I agree that it should be an educational experience and for both the commission and for the student. Young people generally bring fresh ideas, fresh perspectives on what any community could do to be a bit better community. And so I don't think that it would be a problem to have Yamhill student or Carlton student. I feel like we are, especially when we come to the school district, we're one big happy family, right? So, um, I know we did discuss, Shannon, um, we did discuss reaching out to Yamhill and see, to see if they wanted to have also that same thing. And we, obviously, we have no jurisdiction over Yamhill, but we did discuss maybe having a partner with Yamhill doing it, or not a partner, but just asking them if they would be willing to do the same thing with their commission. So, um, either way, is, is eye with me.
Thank you very much. I, so I, I think at this point, maybe we discuss on what is the actual mechanism for outreach and maybe take some volunteers or a volunteer for commencing that outreach to the school in conjunction with the city staff and/or perhaps somebody taking the lead on that project, collaborating with city staff over the next month, and then we all collectively get together, approve whatever the mechanism or form of that communication is to the school. We are approaching the end of the 2023 spring term. I don't have it off the top of me, but I, I think it's in the first or second week of June, so probably before we meet again when the school year will end. So I think the, especially based upon the language of when we have our terms as presently written, again, Commissioner Madrid's comment with respect to the 14-month term perhaps being a little long is well taken. But assuming that we're not in a position where we're gonna change the language of the, the statute, we get ahead of this, have the, a communication sent out sometime over the summer to the relevant persons at the school and/or the local Shemecatas or the other local citizenry so that they, you know, we could be underway with this in August, September and be ready to go and have somebody chosen in the month of September to start in October, per the language of our relevant code section. Is there anybody who would like to take the lead on that? I would volunteer myself, but I've got some personal stuff that's gonna be coming up and resulting in a, a new child at the end of the summer, so I am on specific orders not to extend myself any further.
I, unless anybody else wants to jump in, and if, I don't think it needs to be limited to one person, if somebody else has contacts, I could certainly go that route that I put forward and, and approach Janet at the high school and she in turn, you know, is in contact with all of the colleges in, in Yamhill County and she could probably put out some kind of feelers, I would imagine, through the counseling departments of those places to, to get us some candidates, so I don't mind making that initial outreach.
I think that would be perfect and much appreciated and possibly through Janet, who I don't know, could be a, a connection to one of the school teachers as well, one or more who teach government civics. They might provide a couple of quick candidates and at least kind of get a bug in their ear if they're getting ready to go into their junior or senior year to think about participation.
All right. I think that's great, I totally support that, especially because my June is really kind of crazy and so I don't really have time to commit to anything else in June, but I'm happy to use what connections I have with the high school as well. I mean, I think, again, the more word gets out, the better, if anybody has a neighbor, you know, like, they think, you know, I mean, like, I think the more we can just sort of say that to people we come across, I think all of us can do some outreach on that, but, so I totally support Annette kind of taking the lead, but I will also do what I can with connections to teachers I have.
That's wonderful, and then Anthony, do you want, report back to you or how?
I think if, if you've got the opportunity just to, to, for the two of you to confer and start that process over the next month, maybe our plan is to report back and see how the progress goes and then if we need to further spread out the efforts and energies, we'll just kind of make a, a 30-day timeframe for a report back to us and we go from there. I, I think we have a little bit of time to make, make some plans and plan for the end of the year, but keeping ourselves on a, on a deadline where maybe our plan is by at least September, but maybe August, we have some candidates that are, are in place and then it, the language here says at least one ex officio. If we happen to have a few people who are very interested, I, I don't think we need to necessarily limit it to them and, and if we had multiple, that might give a little bit of flexibility for an otherwise overly involved student or students to jointly share that obligation, so we, we need not limit it to one go-getter if there's a couple of go-getters.
Okay, and then just to clarify, so we will make our inquiries and then report back at our next planning commission meeting to the, to the commission.
I think that, that'd be helpful, and then from there, we can work with the city as far as, you know, if there's any, you know, letterhead or some kind of formal letter, we maybe put together in, in the same way that we go into the post office and we see a city, you know, planning notice or an invitation for, for participation, we do something that kind of formalizes the offer and then we, we can either share that with the individuals directly or with those who are, are kind of community recruiters to kind of share and see what kind of reception we get.
Okay, and then just if, if Janet or any of the potential candidates ask the question, will there be kind of interview process or just if they want to volunteer the time they're in?
Well, the language here says it's appointed by the mayor, so I think our, our best efforts here would be to, to, to kind of see what we get. If we've got 10 people, I think there's naturally a limitation that's gonna come in, but if there's two or three, I think it would probably be best in the form of us maybe in August submitting a series or possibly as late as September, but hopefully August, a recommendation to the mayor formally from all of us just saying, hey, we, you know, pursue it to 2.12.030, we have an opportunity for ex officio. We've, you know, inquired and we, you know, this is our pilot program for doing this, these are some individuals we've identified, these are their qualifications, we would appreciate your appointing these individuals so they can participate and go that route. I don't, I don't think we've got the bandwidth or, or at least myself, the expertise to be able to grill these kids. As you said, if, if they're gonna be giving of themselves in their time, you know, we give them the benefit of doubt and especially if there's a couple, then they can join us jointly and severally.
Okay, I just figured if they asked that question, I wanted to have an answer, thank you.
Appreciate it.
It seems like it would be useful to maybe have like a really simple application if we see that there's interest, because that's one thing a teacher could give out to students, right? It does sort of formalize their interest, we can have, if, if, that's the way you can collect basic information, like, do they live in Yamhill or Carlton or neither, right? Do they, you know, what, what is their kind of basic interest in it? Are they interested in government or city planning or, like, I think there could be something really simple, not, you know, not having to write pages or anything, but gives us sort of the basic information on who they are, what you're, what grade are they in, what, you know? So I think having a really simple application also helps out with the recruiting.
I think that's a great idea.
Also, maybe if these kids are identified and they have this informal discussion, they could write a letter of interest.
Yeah, I think we can solidify some of those options. I think I recall for the planning commission, we had a one-page, you know, hi, my name's Bob, I wanna help kind of piece of paper, and that, that may be a really good template for us to evolve for this specific ex officio type membership.
I mean, high school, I, I work for McMinnville School District, it's done June 16th, and, um, the minute those teachers leave, they're, they're gone for the summer, so, um, yay for them, um, that they can do that. So probably it needs to happen before June 16th and like the last week of school, gosh, I can tell you, it's crazy, the last week of school, so kids are kind of checked out, you know? The week before June 16th, the kids check out.
I might recommend that we not try and have applicants by June 16th, but that if we can reach out to some teachers and say, what would be the best process? Like, they would know how to recruit so that by September, we could have a recruiting slash application process in place. That would be what I would recommend as a timeline.
That's what I love, yeah, I love that, and, um, I think probably this outreach is just to the teachers at this point, and, um...
They could, they could find, like, they could say, oh, yeah, I've got a couple of kids that I think would be great or wow, that's gonna be hard unless you do this.
Because the teachers are the professionals, they know what they've got.
And then we'd have the summer to sort of decide on an application and a process and how many and what their, you know, is, if there needs to be changes to the code to change the timeframe or something, like, that gives us time to do all that so that by, by October, we could maybe have somebody.
Right.
Great advice, I think that's great advice.
Yeah, that's, that's a, and, you know, when we report back in 30 days, I'm sure we'll have further discussion, but thank you for the opportunity, thank you for, on behalf of planning commission, to, to have that added input. You know, the young people, their voice is important, so should probably move on, thank you, thank you.
Excellent. Yeah, thanks for taking the lead on that, and just in general, I put on a lot of meetings in college and in high school, we may be able to get a requisition to the city council for a pizza to be delivered for each of these meetings. I always remember, that was always a great way to bait me into doing stuff, especially after hours. With that said, we are now able to move on to our third and arguably probably one of our longer agenda items that we are, at least with today and our prior meeting, as a continuance of the subdivision 2023-01, the JR Meadows Phase 3. It's a continuance of the subdivision 2023-01, the JR Meadows Phase 3, which as we had discussed before, is near Third and West of South 7 Streets. Our applicant is Mr., or excuse me, not Mr., the Chatty Davis Construction LLC. I've got a little bit of a continuation script here that I need to formally go through. We are formally opening the public hearing for that matter. I mentioned and read on March 20th, the quasi-judicial statement that is similarly applicable here today. And that is found the requirements and indications there are ORS 197.797. That is otherwise incorporated and re-referenced here as if I'm saying it again. Since we had our meeting on March 20th, 2023, do any commissioners wish to declare any conflict of interest, abstentions, bias, or ex parte contact that would prevent you from providing an impartial review analysis and ultimately a vote on this continued matter?
I, I just want to declare something. I don't, I don't believe it biases me in any way. But I do want to declare, especially since he's on the Zoom meeting, that I am married to the YCTC president. And there is, you know, this discussion about the YCTC property adjacent to the. So I just, I don't believe it impacts my decision-making on this in any way. And it's not the primary issue, but I just don't want anything to come back on this as, you know, anybody else being concerned about me not having declared that connection.
Appreciate that very much. As you properly noted, the question is whether or not it will affect your impartiality. And you've clarified that for us today. I'm presuming that's Hans Nordstrom that I see under there that's muted. That's your husband. Excellent. It's always, it's always that nice to have a married pair with us. Any other commissioners have any comments or things to add there?
I'd like to declare, I live, I live next door to the school and I can't help but see the property in question. It's just every time I look out my window, I can see it. It will not bias me. I also want to declare that I have been a vocal advocate for creating connectivity between the JR2 and the school property so that children can walk to school, and I continue to be an advocate for that. It does not bias me in my decision this evening.
Excellent. Well, I think some of the comments that you made specifically with the Cleveland Street have been incorporated as part of a revision from the applicant that were undertaken in conjunction with staff. So your continued advocacy not only is appreciated, but has had, I think, a market update here that I'm hoping that our commission will find to be helpful and improving the application that's before us today. At this time, I would like to call for any, anyone here, audience or in Zoom land, for objections to our jurisdiction tonight regarding our commission's ability to make an impartial decision or otherwise act on this quasi-judicial matter this evening. Hearing none and seeing none, we will move forward to the staff report, followed by questions of staff from the commission. We had a prior staff report that was pretty expansive for our March 20 hearing. And we have, starting at page six in our packet, we've got an updated staff report dated May 10 for the public hearing today, March 17. And I will invite our planner to provide us both the read-through, any context here, and then we will move forward through our process.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Scott White, contract planner with the City of Carlton. I work for Bidwell Amit Valley Council of Governments Under Contract with the city. So first of all.
Pardon my interruption. Pardon my interruption real quick. Amy, can we just scoot the camera over a little bit so we can see Mr. White on there?
There's an owl function on that or it seems like it's a.
There it is. That good looking, you got to be on camera. Thank you very much. I'll let you continue, sir.
All right. Well, yeah, so we have a PowerPoint presentation that I'll bring up here. We'll hopefully show that in just a minute with. And if you can't hear me, we have an air conditioning for those out in Zoom land there. I don't know. I'll speak up if the air conditioning picks on, but.
We can hear you loud and clear.
Okay, very good. Okay, so while we're getting the PowerPoint presentation up, I'll just mention that the commission received a packet. Most of today's, tonight's packet is the continued hearing on JR Meadows 3. And several exhibits to the staff report as well. We're just gonna, we're almost there. Just make sure everybody can see that first. Is everybody able to see the screen? Do we lose people?
Okay, we can see your screen share right down. The slide is invisible. Thank you, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right. So this is, this is what I'll do here. This is a summary of the plan changes. There was a full packet of material that the planning commission received ahead of the March 20th public hearing. And in summary, there's really three items here, things that are new, different about the subdivision since the hearing of March 20. They're kind of shown here. First and foremost is the redesign of East Cleveland with raised concrete sidewalks on the north side and this time inside the project site. So that's the, that's the most significant change there. And there's a cross-section detail here, a couple of cross-sections that are included and shown on exhibit B13 of the staff package. I should mention that there are different references to exhibits here. It's a different exhibit to the applicant's package. But to the, to the staff report, B13 is the plans for that, that street section. Also adjustments to lot lines. Not a lot of them, they're just three here. And they're done to address a concern that was, was not made apparent at the hearing of March 20. This is with respect to trees, to off-site oak trees. And so this exhibit B6, it's shown there in the middle, is what the applicant is, is, we'll talk a little bit more about the trees and the concerns there. But new to the, to the plan is slight adjustments to the size of a couple of lots. And one in particular here, this what lot 154, just increasing the lot area a little bit there to accommodate the tree, the tree root zone that's shown there, 25-foot radius with a fence and enough room there to build a single-family detached dwelling. That's the proposal for that lot. And then finally, clarification of striping and location for bicycle lanes. There's, this is a kind of a blow-up exhibit there. There'll be three exhibit that's part of the plan, the applicant's plan. And exhibit B3 also, there's a larger plan that shows which streets, Third and Wilson, where those bike lanes would be, would be striped. Next slide, please. So most of the staff report is focused on the key issues that were raised by the planning commission on March 20. So what we've done is really look back at these, these key issues. And we've presented them in the staff report here. I'm just going to provide what the planning commission had as sort of general observation and comments in response to the applicant's proposal. We have three bulleted items here. The first one is a lack of apartment units, low-income senior housing and single-story units. We address this in the staff report in further detail, but I'll provide a summary. Basically, for the three bullets that are shown there, we have staff findings and conclusions that state there is insufficient evidence to support the observation that there is a possible error oversight in review of the development code standards and the evidence that's presented as part of the record. Again, the commission's role is quasi-judicial, weighing what is presented as evidence before them. And in this particular set of concerns, with the apartment units there, we mentioned, I believe it was mentioned at the hearing that apartment units is just a unit type that is not allowed by the zone. A different zoning that would allow that, that type of unit, but not the R2 zone. Also, same with lower-income senior units, a single-story. The applicant is not required to provide a percentage of that. And same with single-story units, there's nothing that says a percentage of the subdivision shall be such that there is a difference in building height or number of stories. So the applicant is answering again to that clear and objective criteria that we weigh and take a look at. With the applicant's response, I should mention, and probably the applicant will have an opportunity to present to the commission tonight. But the applicant is providing some variety though in units. We do have not only detached, we have also the attached product that is proposed as part of the subdivision. Green space, this is a matter that we're looking at the potential code updates for the future. But right now, green space, open space is not required. If this were a planned unit development, 20% would be required. And there would be certain requirements for that 20%, but we have a standard subdivision. The applicant's response is that, hey, it's not required. But the applicant does bring up an estimated figure as far as how much the city is expected to collect as far as parkland dedication or that it just system development charges, but park-related fees for, as part of that, each building permit that comes in, there's a portion of that fee that's collected. And those fees can go to various park projects that are identified as eligible for upgrades or buying park space. Then finally, the last bullet here, off-site traffic control devices. This is kind of a mixture of development code that speaks to the limits of what a traffic study is to perform. And also the applicant has a traffic study that says no warrants for off-site traffic control devices. But there's nothing, this city engineer and I, we are, we are not traffic experts, not traffic engineers, but we are familiar with, with traffic reports. And there's nothing out of the ordinary. We're here to report that we don't see anything that is wrong with that, that study. And so, you know, it's, it's one of those things that, you know, we don't, we don't see the nexus proportionality to when it comes to off-site requirements. That's often the case where the city has the burden of proving, you know, that one, that the, the traffic study is wrong and two, that there is a nexus, a connection of the impact and the proportionality that the developer is not, not solving a problem that exists entirely on their own. Their pro-rata share of solving that problem, how they're impacting. So it's just not, not there, right? That's, I have to, I'm happy to talk more about that. Next slide, I want to keep going here with some other things. There was also some general questions, clarifications about the adequacy, availability and consistency with code. The water system was raised as a question, especially for fighting fire flow. The city engineer answered the question with the applicant providing a loop system. And we also took another look at it to verify the, in the staff report here is the PSI level that the applicant is providing, and the city engineer provided a comparative PSI that's required consistent with the Public Works Design Standards and whatever fire blow requirements there are. So we also have sanitary sewer, a very good question here as far as the improvements to the wastewater treatment system that are, that are underway in a land use form here, but not under construction. So we do have this answered as a proposed condition. We'll identify that in a, in a separate slide. But it is, it's a, it's a good question here and it's something we feel comfortable in addressing through, through a condition of approval. And then finally, the bike lanes clarification, where located, where striped. We have a proposed condition related to the applicant's bicycle lane exhibit, a portion that we just identified there in the, in the previous slide, next slide. So finally here, as part of the key issue and something that the applicant again did address, there was questions that were raised about the sidewalk on the north side of Cleveland. Good questions. When, when would a permanent sidewalk be constructed? What is the agreement between the school district and the applicant? And then who is to maintain? Excellent questions. We did go back to development code, taking a hard look at that. I have a portion of section 117.64.030F shown up there. And we have some additional findings that are in the staff report. But in a nutshell, this section basically says full streets are required inside the project site. One, three, fourth street can be, is eligible for consideration when you have the abutting property. When it has that remaining fourth of a street can be developed in the future, basically in the instance of having an undeveloped property. And so the staff report basically addresses this section and says to, as far as the school district mostly is developed, you will not see the remaining, if it's, if it's a three-quarter street in answering to that, that first full. And when would the permanent sidewalk be constructed? Unlikely through development of the school district is primarily developed. So anyways, all that being said, the applicant's redesign of East Cleveland includes a full, full street improvement with raised sidewalks from from the JR2 improvements there, the existing stub of of Cleveland Street all the way up, all the way to Third, and then continues it all the way to the campus boundary of school. So, so that's, that's a good thing. And of course, all of the talk about agreements with funding property owners, school district and YCTC are no longer necessary. So we're just going to go into some proposed conditions of approval. And this is exhibit A-2 of the commission's packet with changes shown struck through, changes that are different than what was presented to the planning commission on March 20 or that staff report. Yeah, the structure means that it's to be eliminated, removed. And the bold and highlighted in yellow indicates a proposal for addition. So this, this first one regards, is regarding to a separation easement between the front garage and the outside edge of sidewalk. Just a quick recollection, I don't think the staff report went into depth with this, but it was mentioned at the March 20 hearing, some observations in JR2 with respect to vehicles encroaching into the sidewalk and the discovery and reviewing the building permits of JR2 that the homes are closer than 20 feet. It's being measured from the property line as opposed to the easement that's in a sidewalk. So, so this is a way to sort of, we feel we can address this. The addition there to the bottom is the staff proposal. It's sort of done so in, in response to, mostly what this, this particular staff. I know you had a different staff. I know you had a different staff person than the first hearing and and you have an older staff person. Uh in uh in the second hearing now and uh it's it's just been my experience in working with several. County surveyors uh in various counties uh that some have um. Different interpretations of state law, specifically uh governing final plats is state law. O R S ninety ninety two is is the specific chapter, it it's it is something that um. Uh every once in a while, you you have uh at the final plant stage, a county surveyor that will say. Uh no, I can't accept that type of easement um and they say so in response to a subsection. Of uh of O R S uh ninety two. So this is one particular item that uh the applicant has some sensitivity with. And you'll hear the applicant's uh thought about uh the addition here. Uh we are okay, I mean it's absolutely okay with what the applicant is proposing. Uh as long as it is reflected on the plaque and it's very important to have that reflected on the plaque. As it provides the best customer service that uh that Carlton can provide. Uh to anybody looking at developing one of these lots in here, if it's to the plat. It enables Amy to say, yeah, this is what the the setback is, so it it's really, there's. There may be some wordsmithing to this uh at at the end here as we were having some discussion, the city attorney. And the applicant's attorney were kind of discussing a little bit of that. Uh but I wanted to provide just background uh as to the reason on the change for this condition. Again, the next uh next uh slide there. Another proposed condition of approval uh relates to tree uh uh protection measures. As I mentioned, we had a late uh uh arrival due to the the record is the uh submittal. Uh specific to the the property that is immediately but east of the uh subject property. And uh the property's own owners uh Coldwell. And uh two oak trees are identified in the written communication. Uh it's uh one is an email that was submitted to the record again after the hearing of March uh twentieth. Uh followed by uh Har- Harsted's Arborus. Uh so the calls uh the Coldwells provided a an arborist report on on the these uh two oak trees. Uh and I think also that they have an attorney uh that wrote a letter to the record as as well. Uh the applicant answers accordingly, um I don't think that this is so much the the. The dueling uh arborist uh report, but there are two uh expert um. Uh test experts in the way of two arbers that uh have 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 letters to the record speaking to the oak trees. And it's mostly uh uh consistency from what I can tell, a twenty five foot um. Uh radius uh along the the trunk there, recognizing the root zone of the tree. And that the fencing uh that exhibit that was shown there uh is reflective of the of of answering to the. Uh protection concern, so uh that this is the added text that just basically says, hey, there's an exhibit. Expect to see the uh expect to see the uh fencing out there prior to uh commencing any sort of grading. And construction activity and uh after all of that is done, after after home construction too, the the fence would would go away. Uh so uh that's the basis of that con- condition, uh again, the next uh proposed condition. Uh so this is a condition related to the triangular shaped area, the very northeast corner of the subdivision is roughly about. Two thousand five hundred square feet, I think, and it's shown there, track A is kind of identified as open space. Uh on the um again, open space not required. Uh we we've made some changes to this, uh this is uh the collaborative effort, my myself and the city um engineer. Uh this is a a dedication as needed for stormwater detention or landscape purposes. Um and some trees that would be planted in in this uh area, it wouldn't, it it may be that's not. Um you know, the functioning as open space, it's it's probably not gonna be an active open space. Uh and it and it may have a stormwater functionality to it. And it could even be something uh transformer box or something like that with the franchise utilities, so. Um so I that's kind of why we are making sure that the condition is 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 worded such. Uh I don't know, Gordon, did you have anything more on on this one or?
No, we we don't know if it's needed for stormwater, the the designers would be going through that, so. If it's not needed, then landscape is great.
Okay, alright, so uh and so that's uh another one, uh next uh proposed condition there. Uh this one is a simple one, as agreements are no longer necessary with the school district or other property owners, the north, uh we're just striking that condition. Uh next uh condition. Uh so this is a proposed condition uh that basically says Cleveland Street is to be constructed as part of the applicant's uh. Construction plan that they submit to the city for all of the utilities and street improvements and things like that. Uh what uh typically sidewalks um on on streets are are the one of the last things that gets constructed. Uh and there's sort of a reason for that because uh you know, utilities and things like that and. Oh subcontractors will bust up the sidewalk and all that sort of thing, so um we want though on the north side. Uh Cleveland to be constructed as part of the the construction plan for the utilities and and not done. Sort of uh piece by piece through through the building permit process. Uh so that that's kind of the reason for that that condition. Uh I got a couple more conditions that were were almost done here, let's see. Uh the another proposed condition is the bike, it just simply identifies the exhibit that the applicant has provided to the record. To make that sure that that's crystal clear and uh next um. Uh this is another one that the the city engineer and myself collaborated on. It's related to uh something that we saw that I. From what I can tell in the code, it doesn't necessitate a a variance to adjust the location of of driveways. It is preferable to have driveways um located on the lesser class street, like a local street. As opposed to a collector and a collector as opposed to an arterial. Uh so but a variance does not appear to be necessary, so we've we've changed the language here accordingly. Uh what the commission will see eventually, especially well, this specifically for the uh attached um a product. Uh it will come back to the commission as a sort of a design review application. And you'll see um the the building designs, uh also the placement of where. The uh driveways will will go, tho- those arrows are just kind of indicating where the driveways will will go. Um the applicants um submittal package is part of the March twentieth uh hearing. Had a had kind of a conceptual idea uh of where the the driveways, so these will be duplex units. And you can kind of see the where where there'll be um you know, uh the attached product here, but um. But basically, there's not gonna be a lot of driveways along the higher classification street, and that's the purpose of of this exhibit. Um so anyways, uh that that's the reason for the change, uh next uh slide means, okay, a long-winded one here. This is one I'll I'll probably defer over to to Gordon to uh to talk about he. Uh so after the uh hearing of March twentieth, uh the city engineer and the applicant's engineer. Uh had a discussion as to uh the water uh uh wastewater treatment plant. And the um uh as we mentioned, the biological upgrades that are are haven't started construction yet. But are are anticipated to do so. And so this um this condition would replace what was shown there in in blue, that it you know, hey. You can't get final plat until uh the these things are are constructed and and so now it's it's allowing a little bit more. Uh a ability here for the applicant to uh to even do a do a study of it to determine if it's ready or not. Um I I will turn ma- maybe over to to Gordon, do you uh wanna say anything more about this condition as far as what um? What it's about, or?
Sure, so the the concern is that the wastewater treatment plant needs more biological capacity. Uh before any of these homes can go online. And so uh one of the things that was brought up is they wanna be able to sign the final plat. So they can be done with essentially their their land use permit. Uh within the time period because they don't have control over when the treatment plant is upgraded. So what you see here is that we are allowing them to uh complete the final plat. Prior to the treatment plant being upgraded, but we will not allow any. Uh building permits to be submitted. And there would be a, what do we call it? Uh there would be a covenant prohibiting sale or essentially marketing those lots. Until the treatment plant uh biological uh capacity is completed. So that protects the city and it allows them to uh complete their land use action. And the there are two ways to determine, do we have biological capacity? The first is we get three phase power out to the treatment plant and all the biological improvements are made. So that's a, you know, the work is done. And by the way, that could happen before the rest of the treatment plant gets done. So biological capacity and hydraulic capacity, two different things. Um so what the applicant also wanted the ability to do is to do a. Study of the treatment plant's biological capacity to determine. If we have it now or not. And we said, okay, if you wanna do a study that is at your expense. But is reviewed, the scope and results reviewed by the city, that's fine as well. So those are those two conditions there for the biological capacity. Either it's done or you do a s- they do a study to evaluate whether the capacity is sufficient. And we, the city, need to review and approve that study.
What, can I ask a quick question? Do the do they pay for the time it takes for you to review or for the city staff to review it?
Uh that was not discussed, uh they are uh saying that they would. Uh pay for the actual study. But staff time for review of that was not discussed.
Would that be additional if 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 they didn't do their own study and it went through the first scenario? Um would that save?
So if we go through the first scenario, there's uh there's nothing for staff to review.
Right.
It's just on.
So that's essentially free for us. Well, I mean, not free, obviously, but we're not involving staff time, other than what the work needs to be done anyway.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh we'll we'll move on to the the next uh proposed condition, which is which is related to the last condition. Uh and this is the applicant's request. Uh for a twelve month, one year extension to the um eighteen month approval period. For uh for preliminary approval, so what what's before? The planning commission tonight is a decision of uh regarding specifically the preliminary. Uh approval, uh and uh there's also though this request for uh extension. Of preliminary uh for what you haven't done yet, so while that seems a bit strange. Uh we we say in the staff report that it is possible. Uh we checked the staff, I mean, checked the code and there there's nothing that precludes the commission from from doing this. Uh some codes of various cities require applicants to to do something, to do some sort of. Construction, some level of performance out in the field uh before there is uh an extension. But there is not that criteria as part of the the Carlton code. Uh and there isn't anything else, uh circumstances or anything else, no criteria. That speaks to approving a uh uh an extension. Uh so eligibility wise, uh yes, it's before the the commission tonight. I believe the applicant, as part of their presentation, will talk a little bit more, there was that uh. Uh you know, on March twentieth, the applicant did say, hey, there's there's things that are outside our ability to control. Uh and there might be a little bit more of that addressed uh this this evening from what I know. Uh but uh at least on on this, we'll go to the next uh slide here. It relates to the uh the bottom uh bullet there, the commission approves, supports the time. Uh extension request of this uh approval, as requested by the applicant. Uh we would request the the motion uh clarified, so. We are recommending approval, subject to the conditions identified, uh exhibit uh A dash two. Um uh also, Gordon, reopen the hearing to tonight as there is new evidence to the record. Um uh to deliberate, make a decision, um I do wanna mention, there's reference there to a hundred twenty days. And in the staff report, uh there's kind of a summary of, well, how much time do we have, uh and that is a concern. Um that one hundred twenty days uh includes all of the uh due process and associated with. Uh an appeal, and so staff has to kind of think of a worst case case scenario sometimes. If there is an appeal and we need those time for the appeal period, the notice that goes with that, getting the council together. Uh so um the basically, uh we are asking tonight that the commission uh make a decision. Uh approval or denial, but a decision is is appropriate at this time, so happy to answer questions of the commission.
I have a question about, I just, and maybe it'll come up later too, um but uh just this, the last piece with the extension. So if we approve it with the, they're asking for us to actually approve the extension tonight, which would give them more time to actually. Like submit, I just wanna to submit the like plans for the subdivision, is that correct? Is that what there, is that what the next phase, is that what we're extending?
Yeah, you're, yeah, yeah, you're uh, yeah, exactly, you're extending uh the the timeframe to which they need to. To have final plat approval, uh they have a number of things, a number of the conditions.
So that's not the, that's that's the plat approval, which is the like, the design, is that in? What's the plat?
You have design.
Okay.
Then you have construction and then you have the plat.
Okay, so. So the where they're asking the extension before that final thing happens, okay?
Morning of the plant, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
They they will construct, they uh.
So they would have basically two and a half years to. Okay, okay, that was not clear to me, what we were, what the extension was for, yeah, okay.
I I actually, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to address these questions, I had actually questions. Um I just kind of went through page by page of the staff report, beginning on page eleven. Would you like me to save these questions till the end after the applicant has um presented their information? I think they'll probably have some answering.
Okay, yeah, i- if it is a question of staff to the report, uh yeah, I mean, uh if it is something, it might be in staff. Or say, uh you know, here's here's our response, but I you know, also we feel the applicant, but you know, or we could defer it to the applicant. We feel it more of a applicant.
Okay, well, so then on page eleven, um it the city engineer observes the right of way on East Cleveland is really close to private property line. Um and he recommends to stake out the right of way lines to verify that the construction is within the right of way. Um and not encroaching, um is that appropriate to make as a condition of approval? Um, and not encroaching. Um, is that appropriate to make as a condition of approval? Because I, my concern is. That, um, site prep happens and soil gets moved and filled and, and cut. And then all of a sudden it's like, ooh, oops, that already happened. Now, now we have an as-built situation. Um, so is that appropriate to have that, uh, condition of approval to stake out those right of way lines?
Well, it's something that I would require as part of the design. So, you know, from my standpoint, it's a design. Design issue.
Mm-hmm.
I'm, I'm gonna look at it and say, oh gosh, you're really, really close. To the property line. You need to do something about that. If you can't get away from it. Then you need to do something during construction that identifies where that is. So I'll make it a requirement of design.
Mm-hmm. So it seems, it feels like on, like, it feels like sort of just like a suggestion. Like that you recommend doing it when the way it's written here. So, um. Is that, is that not? I mean, how is that actually enforced? Like you go out at the beginning and say, where are your lines or?
They don't get approval of the design until I see how they're going to address that.
Got it.
And then, then yes, if, if. The answer is you got to stake that out, then yes, we have to go out there and feel, see that it's done.
Okay. So if we, um.
There are other ways of doing it as well. So. I, I don't know that I want to say this is the way you have to do it. So that's, that's why it's not a condition. They may come back and, and say, um, we can move that a little bit away. Uh, we got the room to move it six inches or a foot away and then we're good to go. Or they may say, gosh, we've talked to the neighbors, got a construction easement. So there, but there are multiple ways that they can address this. So that's why it's not a condition to do it this way.
The, the applicant will also address this question as, as well. Um, I believe that the applicant will state for the record that they have a construction easement. Or they are working with them and have discussed, uh, with, as you say, with the school district and a budding property. So I, I, I'm thinking the applicant will. That this, as far as the, the ease, the construction easement will, will, will alleviate that, that height list. So, so I think it, this is going to be asked.
And then a construction easement would be like when we say the school district. We're talking about school boards signing it and approving it? Or is that just, I mean, how is that officially documented?
Uh, from our standpoint, we say. Designer, give me the construction easement from. The property owner. And they have to deal with it, with the property owner. They have to document it. They got to show us the documentation. And, uh, we don't say you can go forward, so, until we see that documentation.
And, and just to clarify, I know we're talking a lot about easements and things here tonight. The construction easement is not something that would need to be put on the plat at all. It has no functionality as far as the recorded plat. This is just an easement, it's temporary. It's temporary construction. Easement, really more of an agreement, if anything.
So it allows them.
I don't even know if it needs to be an easement.
Just, does it allow them to drive, for example, their trucks on? Private property? Is that, is that what the easement's for? The construction easement? Um, is, is a construction easement, it allows them to put equipment over private property that has that easement? Or what is that construction easement?
So the construction easement allows. The contractor to enter that. Portion of the private property. In order to build what they need to build. And then they have to put it back to the condition it was before. So. It allows them, yes, to go on that private property just for that location. So if they get a five foot easement, they can only go five feet over.
I see. I see. Um. So then my, I guess my question in a, in kind of conjunction with that is, um. You can see from the Google map that there's a, a kind of a hedge of trees. Um. How are, how are or do those need, um, another agreement to be protected? Because that functions as a screen between the elementary school and whatever potential subdivision is built there?
That would be, uh, all documented in the temporary constructions. So all conditions for that easement. Uh, the size of it, what they can do on it, uh, what they have to protect, what they have to return it to. Would all be in that temporary construction.
So that's a matter for the school district to sort out with the applicant?
Yep.
Okay. Um. Let me see.
That's the direction the designer wants to go.
Okay.
There are other options as we noted.
And then on page twenty-six. If I move directly to it. Um. Let's see. Back to it. Um. There is a condition B. Um, condition one addresses surcharging of stormwater lines and the possible need for stormwater detention. Um. And in, in addition to that, um. It says on page fifty-one. That there may be an onsite stormwater that is discharged to the east in a pipe crossing school property. And that an easement would be required. Um, I'm concerned about leaving that to the last minute. It seems like we would need to resolve that drainage and where it's going to go before. Any work does, is done?
The drainage is all, uh, shown where, what they're going to do with it.
Mm-hmm. So on page fifty-one, number twenty. Where it says onsite stormwater will be discharged to the east in a pipe crossing school property. That will disturb the tract, track. Um, and it says easement will be required. And it's not clear. It's a drainage way and it has a potential to impact neighbors.
Is, is it fifty, page fifty-one of the pre-app notes that they refer to the YTC pre-app?
Let's see, it's in our agenda packet. It's page fifty-one of our agenda packet.
So, so we want to make sure that, uh, yeah, the, the applicant has some items in here that, um. Uh, or perhaps for more, more so for background information on kind of, what I understand the reason why. Uh, they pursued the, uh, three quarters street, uh, proposal, um, and, um. So, so this, this, so pre-application co- comments here, um, let me just kind of qualify them.
May, may I, may I clarify? Those pre-application comments?
No, we may not. Yeah, so, so there will be time for the applicant to, to speak. Uh, right now, we're, we're still on the staff presentation. Uh, so, uh, the applicant will have an opportunity to, to speak here in just a, just a moment. But I just do want to clarify that, yeah, the, the reference, uh, commissioner, uh, Terrell has, has referenced, uh, something that is a, a pre-app con- uh, uh, comment. And not a proposed condition. So, so I just want to make that clarification and we can go on to other questions.
What, one other item there. This is a pre-app for a different.
Different site, different development that has not, that has not transpired.
Got it. Okay.
The YCTC.
Oh, okay, got it. Sorry. Okay, so then back to twenty-six, um, it said, um, page twenty-six, condition B, which is bring stormwater surcharge plan back to the commis- um, where. So page twenty-six.
Okay.
Um.
Okay.
And letter B, um. It says. Um. The possible surcharging of stormwater lines. And that, that'll, they're going to talk about it later during the design phase. Um. Which one is that? On letter B on page twenty-six.
And this might be a good question as the applicant, this is part of, just for reference and the, and those who are wondering on, on Zoom land, what we're talking about. Uh, page twenty-six, uh, is the applicant's written statement. Uh, so it might be, uh, I'm just thinking it might be a good question for the applicant, uh, as it is the applicant's, uh, written statement, uh, or resubmit a kind of explaining things there.
Perfect. Okay. And then my last comment is, um. The reason, and I, I think it's important to just clarify this, the reason I was concerned about painting the bike lanes is because, um, in the first application, um. Third Street was very explicitly called out to be painted. And then Wilson Street, there's, it just says that bike lanes exist. And the reason, um, I find it necessary to actually say that they're striped. Is because apparently that has been in the past, that's been a, uh. Apparently the city has interpreted bike lanes to mean striped or not striped. And so just to be absolutely clear, um, in my opinion, um, bike lanes are always striped if they're called bike lanes. And if, if you want to take a bikeway or other. Other ways, that is something that could be considered, um, under a different definition. And then my other comment is, um, on that original one, there was, um. A, a further comment after Wilson Street that, um, that, that didn't meet current safety standards because there was no buffering. And so I'd like to make a, a suggestion that we expand the bike lane from five feet to six feet, um, which would actually cost nothing more to the developer. And, or to the city, it wouldn't be any added expense. You would just make the bike lane wider for increased safety for the bicyclists. And you would decrease the travel lanes to ten feet, which, um, are acceptable to NACTO. NACTO endorses it. And most, most traffic, most city planners, I think, um, would agree that, um, ten feet is adequate as a driving lane. So that's my suggestion for the bike lanes. First of all, that they be called out specifically a stripe. And that we increase them to six feet. Because that's no added expense or effort.
Okay, so, um. Uh, yeah, the staff can, and the applicant can respond, uh, to, to this as, as well. Um, I tell you, maybe we'll wait for the applicant to kind of, I know it was, it, the, the change mentioned is, is, is one foot, but sometimes one foot. Brings another thing. And so, uh, maybe we'll see, see what the applicant has to say to that. Um, we can also check the, the street standards to see if that's a significant change to, uh, to make or break the vehicle lane from eleven to ten, um. But, um, uh, so, uh, yeah, and.
And my concern is that those long straight streets that are very, very wide. When we have wide travel lanes, the wider the travel lane, the more, um, the more free people, drivers feel to go fast. And if, as in our comprehensive plan is, we're trying to encourage multimodal transportation. And so it feels more welcoming to ride on a six-foot bicycle lane than a five-foot one. And the staff has called out a concern about doors opening into the bike lane and that gives you an extra foot. To, um, maneuver around that should that occur.
Yeah. Other questions? Okay, so for the chair, uh, at least, uh, those who are. Here, now this kind of, I, I think we can, uh, take off the, um. Uh, all the, the PowerPoint at this, at this point and return back to seeing visually. Those who, uh, we can't see here in the, in the chambers, but, um, we'll be doing that in just a moment here. We're gonna. Stop sharing the screen or the PowerPoint and go back to, uh, other commissioners that are. Uh, in Zoom land there. And I will also, um, give this back to the chair.
Technical.
That technical.
So, um, I, I didn't have the, the screen share and now I see it back up. Were we going to revisit the screen share? Are we all, uh, done with the staff report and the follow-on questions? I see there is a hand raise from, uh, Annette.
Um, before we proceed any further, I just had two very quick questions. One to Gordon. Regarding that construction easement. And based on Commissioner Terrell's concerns, would there not already have been in place a survey? To establish those lines? That's my question.
To establish the property boundaries? Is that your question?
That is my question.
Okay, so the, the property boundaries are. Described and they would have picked up property pins as part of their survey?
Right.
Uh, so they will have those. The, the question is more about, uh, during construction. Um, you know, the plans will show, gosh, we're all on our property, but construction gets a little sloppy and you can't. Always see that line in the fields.
Right.
That's, that's the issue. And so that's.
But the, but. But the, but the property owner would have some recourse and saying, well, no, this is where the pin is. Here's the five feet. So that was, that, that clarifies that concern. So thank you, Gordon.
Yes.
And then the other, um. Lingering question that I have from the previous meeting. And now we have this redesign. Of what was going to be a gravel easement, now is going to be a full-on three-quarter street, whatever. Rendering moot the agreements. I think we had asked to see. The agreements with the school district. So did those in fact exist?
Uh, no. Uh, and based on the redesign, all the improvements are being done on their properties. So. Those ease, those. Agreements to put a sidewalk on the. School property are no longer needed. Because they're.
Yeah, I, I, I understand the no longer needed because now it's on the developer's property. My question was. Going back to that previous meeting, sixty, like, did, did those agreements in fact exist?
No, they were. They, as far as staff knows, there was no. Uh, agreement that was signed with the school district.
That's, that's my question. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any other questions for our very helpful planner from the commission? Hearing none and seeing none. I would just like to take a poll among you fine commissioners. Would you like to take a? Five-minute potty break or would you like to power on through?
Um, I, 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 I wouldn't mind a five-minute break because as you could see, I was in the car furiously getting into a wifi range to join. And so I would, I would love, I, I don't even need five minutes, but two would be great.
Let, let's go ahead and give you plenty of time to go ahead and get some water to replenish. Um, we'll take a five-minute recess. Let's call it six minutes for good measure and re, uh, rekindle our discussion here at seven thirty-three. So five minutes, fifty seconds.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, everybody. Thirty-three P M. We'll get our Zoom land set back up.
Thank you very much, Anthony.
Of course. I went and got myself a beverage too. Um. With that, we are back to order. For our, um, judicial continuance this evening. We have just completed the staff report and completed the questions of staff from the commission. Now we will, um, invite the applicant to provide. Uh, their supplemental presentation to us here this evening, followed by questions of the applicant by the commission. Mr. Hoyt, I believe the, uh, microphone's in your hands and then it'll probably possibly pass along to AKS, but we will defer to you. Thank you for being here this evening, sir.
Our, excuse me, thank you. Our pleasure and you correctly anticipate that I will start out and A-K-S will clean up a few details. And important points when I'm completed. Thank you, Chair Stewart. Uh, commissioners, city staff. Uh, first of all, I want to apologize. I was not trying to step out of line. I was just trying to maybe save some time and be efficient. And note that the pre-app notes being talked about were not for this project, but were for another project and those applications, those conditions didn't relate to this matter. Uh, and so that, that was all I was trying to note and that came out quickly. And so thank you and I apologize for stepping in. I was just trying to. Make that, that clarification. Um, thank you. So we're here back after a rec, open record period. We had a lengthy and informative hearing, uh, a few weeks ago, several weeks ago at this point. And, uh, the record was held open for additional comments and clarification. During that time, the project has responded to a lot of the concerns that we heard from the planning commission. Uh, we also have provided documentation to respond to the one public comment that was received during that time, which expressed concern regarding the trees. Which was something the applicant had provided for in the initial design. Uh, and I believe that our arborist and the, uh, Cole Wells arborist are in agreement that there should be a twenty-five foot root buffer. And we're in agreement that there should be fencing in place to protect those trees. So, and we'll address that in, in more detail as we go forward. So and we'll address that in in more detail as we go forward. To make sure that we were trying to be responsive to the planning commission, we took the time to go back and review the hearing in detail. And from that, we kind of came out with a list of concerns that the commission had identified. Those were what kind of housing is uh, and most of these were addressed in the staff report, so I'm going to be very brief and just touch on these things to try and clarify a few things. The type of housing that's allowed, the requirement that bike lanes be striped, uh access to and the availability and and provision of parkland, the tree protection for the the oak trees that are in the area and are significant, we're trying to preserve, and then the Cleveland Street alignment and location. Um before I go too far, I want to share my screen, if that's okay, I think I have the ability to do that. And uh is everybody now seeing the project? Um whoop, I think you're not anymore, seeing the project team slide.
We can see that, sir, thank you.
Okay, so just to reintroduce everybody to
Good for, done, there it is.
So um can you still see the project screen slide?
Yes, sir.
Got an overlay.
I I I have had this experience before, uh and somehow screen sharing disconnects my Zoom. And so I'm not sure how to solve that technical problem, so I'm going to work without it, except to the extent that maybe AKS can help us at times, but the type of housing is governed by the zoning, we don't control that. Here, it's an R two zone, the staff noted that that allows, does not allow for multifamily housing, it allows for attached housing. Uh you will see attached to our uh submission, the zone code for the R two zone, it was exhibit um A to our submission, it's page thirty of your packet. It sets forth the permitted uses. Uh it looks like AKS has shared their screen, and if you can go to slide uh three for me, that's the one we're looking for at this point. You can see the allowed uses in the zone include duplexes, single-family dwellings, but it doesn't authorize the multifamily dwelling. And here, I think it's kind of important to note that part of the evolution of this project was the understanding that the city of Carlton was in the process of amending its own code, and that those amendments would reconfigure some of the lot coverage requirements to allow uh construction of townhomes. And the developer recognized the value of townhomes, the city of Carlton, and elected to uh wait for those amendments to take place so that the project could progress as a townhome development or include townhomes. And so this application was actually held until the amendments were completed, and now is being brought forth under those amendments to include the townhomes. So while there's not the multifamily home, uh house, they've been talked about, townhomes are included. The striping of bike lanes and if AKS can move to the next screen, the staff report highlighted this, hopefully this highlights it for you as well. The original plans include this information, it's a little hard to find on the original plans, and I know there was some difficulty finding it during the first hearing, but you can see that the five-foot bike lanes are there, I'll let AKS address the question regarding with the bike lanes because they've been working on the technical design, those technical design standards. But those bike lanes are uh provided to be striped, it is part of the plans, it should not be an issue. The parkland, uh and we're fine with a condition that requires a striping. The parkland uh under the city's code, parkland is not required to be dedicated dedicated, but park S D Cs are required. And if you calculate the park S D Cs under the city's current code, based on the number of lots, in excess of two hundred thousand dollars will be paid by um builders when building permits are pulled that will allow either acquisition or improvement of existing parkland. And in this particular property, the park is, there is a park adjacent to it in that the city actually has a classification for parks uh that references a uh school open space park. And that is a park that's basically open during non-school hours to the community. The Carlton Elementary Ground is specifically identified as one of those parks, and so there's a park immediately adjacent to this. And some of the improvements that are included in the redesign of Cleveland Street assure pedestrian connectivity for not only this project, but J R Meadows one and J R Meadows two, so that people will be able to flow on sidewalks through those developments to that park and have access to it. So and in addition to the two hundred thousand or so dollars that this project will generate, there's going to be uh the connection, the pedestrian connection established to this already existing park within the city's park system and plan. Uh the mature trees, the cowls noted this, uh they submitted their arborist letter, as well as a letter from their attorney. Uh their attorney notes that if we do anything outside the law to mess up those trees, there's some pretty draconian remedies, we're all aware of that, and we appreciate the Caldwell's calling that to our attention. Uh it had already been addressed in the plan, you can see here, this is the tree protection plan, and you can see the twenty-five-foot buffer around the trees, which is what their arborist called for. You'll also see that Lot one fifty-four, which is the lot above the road, has been expanded to allow a broader building envelope, to allow avoidance of the um uh root structure of that tree, and that resulted in the adjustment of Lot one fifty-five and one fifty-six slightly as well. So uh the in the street improvements you see are stopped short. That was provided in the plan, and you'll probably recall from the last hearing that there was some discussion that the city wanted the developer to uh justify why they weren't going all the way to the end of the street, and we noted the trees, and everybody agreed that that was an appropriate uh justification. As it relates to Cleveland Slate, Cleveland Street, and if we could move to the next slide, um the there was significant discussion regarding the impact on the school district's property, and I want to stop for just one moment and address Commissioner Madrid's come or question regarding an agreement with the school district. The concept of building the, the original concept of building a pathway on the school district's property was reviewed with the school district, and they expressed consent, support for the project. A formal agreement was never entered into because it didn't seem necessary, as they had said that they would approve it. It was recognized that a formal agreement would be needed before anything could actually be constructed, because a general kind of, hey, we're okay with this, which is what we had, uh wouldn't work when you actually went to build, and that's why the condition was there that said, hey, you've got to provide us the written agreement that demonstrates the school district has formally approved this. And we recognize that that kind of formal agreement would have to be provided. No formal agreement was ever executed or reached because after the planning commission's comments, the project was redesigned to move Cleveland Street entirely off of the school district's property, so no longer is the school district's property impacted. And then this seems like a good time as well to stop and address Commissioner Terrell's concerns regarding the staking of the property line, uh a- as well as Commissioner Madrid's about a survey. There are existing survey pins in the ground that I'm sure were identified in the existing survey. Surveyors are actually by law required to reflect when they identify a survey peg and uh include that on their survey. As the normal and standard part of construction, before any equipment goes on the ground and starts moving dirt, a survey is performed, lot corners are identified and lot lines are identified, so that everybody knows where they can work and where they can't. And i- i- you don't, it doesn't take a lot of imagination to understand that that's the byproduct of a lot of people who screwed that up. And if there is a mistake, that's a trespass, there are direct remedies associated with that. But the staking of a construction site to show the uh boundary lines, show the elevations, where work is to be done and where work is not to be done, is a standard practice and would be addressed to provide protection to that property line, to assure that there's no intrusion onto the school district property. If a construction easement, which was talked about at some length, is obtained, the consul, the school district controls that. The applicant has no ability to require the school district to provide any kind of consent, the school district can say, nope, you want to build your project, you got to build it entirely on your dirt, you can't come anywhere near ours. So the nature and scope of that, as it relates to trees, as it relates to the scope of intrusion, all of that will be driven and controlled by consent by the school district. And as well, as with all easements, for it to be effective, it must be signed by the property owner. And so the school district itself would have to, by motion, authorize the the execution of it, and then there would have to be a signature on the document by the school district if there's to be a construction easement. And so the school district holds all the cards in that regard, it's their property, they control what can be done and not done on it. Uh and so if there's a construction easement, they will determine the scope. Generally, construction easements are within just a few feet of the property line that allow intrusion most of the time to make any impact that might result from from construction uh to negate it or mitigate it by smoothing, grading, making things a smoother transition, and the scope of all those things are agreed upon well in advance. And I do want to stop and note that the initial design was not done by the applicant because they wanted to save space, it was done because there's a substantial amount of information in the city of Carlton's records and plans that was all provided to the applicant and considered by the applicant when the project was being designed, but indicated that Cleveland Street was supposed to straddle that line. The T S P showed it straddling the line, it was a two thousand and one partition where land was taken for a right-of-way uh as part of that partition that showed it straddling the line. There's a traffic analysis zone map that shows the the street straddling the line. The um Y C T C pre-application notes that were being discussed in terms of the easement requirements and things that applied to that project, not this one, noted that the uh road would have to be constructed straddling the line. And that's the reason the original design did what it did, and the applicant actually tried to go farther than required by doing the full three-quarter street improvement plus a sidewalk. Uh but once the concerns were raised by the planning commission that there were issues that needed to be addressed there, this was completely redesigned, Cleveland Street moved entirely onto the applicant's property, there will be no impact on the school district's property unless and until the school district signs an easement allowing that to happen. Anything beyond that would definitely be a trespass and would be actionable, actionable. So that is kind of the, those were the substantive concerns that were there. The project was modified in response to that. There were a couple of conditions or a couple of issues raised regarding some of the conditions, and I want to just touch on those because conditions, the technicalities associated with them are sometimes where we lawyers uh get lost, and I want to venture there and hopefully not get us all lost. First, as it relates to the newly proposed condition five related to um recording of the plat and requiring um work to be completed before uh the plat's recorded. There are other conditions elsewhere, and I just want to make sure that we're reading these conditions correctly. Some of the other conditions allow the plat to be recorded upon the execution of a construction agreement and the posting of a bond. We wouldn't want the language in condition five to be an impediment to that other condition, and so we're understanding that condition five would be read consistent with that, that as long as the construction plans and the bonding and the performance requirements include construction of the sidewalks on the north side of Cleveland Street, which makes perfect sense because there aren't lots over there, there aren't contractors coming along to build them. So you want to make sure that those are built up front, that that is done as part of the initial construction before building permits are issued, so there'd be a gatekeeping requirement there. I don't know that that requires any clarification of the condition, just an understanding that it would not modify the other conditions requiring actual construction as opposed to bonding of that construction. The extensions, uh I just wanted to clarify, so some discussion regarding that, that is simply would extend the time for record for design, construction and recording of the plat by twelve months to allow what would be roughly two and a half years. Uh and we would ask that that proceed because of the uncertainties related to the um uh sewage treatment plant. We would do that, but can uh Commissioner Terrell raised a question regarding the sewage treatment plant. Uh and the second possibility there being an applicant paid for study that would authorize um uh if it showed there was adequate capacity and city staff review agreed with that, it would allow the issuance of building permits. She expressed concern about who paid for staff time. We are happy to have the condition modified to provide that the applicant would pay for both the study and the staff time involved in staff's review of that condition. So we're not intending or asking that the city absorb any additional financial burden to meet that condition. Uh we're happy to have that be the applicant's burden, should that study be used or be necessary. Uh a- as it relates to the setback, if uh AKS, if you could show the setback language, uh Mr. White and I apparently have had some of the same experiences with surveyors. There are certain surveyors who are very, very picky about what is shown on plats, and I agree with Mr. White that that can be an issue. We recognize that issue, and we have acknowledged that issue throughout this process. Uh we also recognize and agree that we want to make sure that the garages on the project are now and in the future set back twenty feet from the back of sidewalk. Uh the challenge created by the alternative language proposed in the staff's condition is, I think, an unintended consequence, and that is that i- if there is a public right-of-way easement for twenty feet behind the sidewalk, effectively, the front twenty feet of the lot are being taken for a public right-of-way. A right-of-way is defined under the code as a publicly owned um uh portion of property usually used for transportation facilities. So arguably, if that easement was imposed, landowners couldn't plant trees, they couldn't plant bushes, they couldn't put in sprinkler systems, and the city could, if it wanted to, pave tho- the front twenty feet of each lot. And that has a significant impact beyond just that potential right-of-way in that the requirement is that the garage be set back twenty feet. But particularly in the townhomes, there's a corresponding requirement that the garage be sent that set back behind the front of the home. So if the front of the home has to be set back twenty feet, as it would have to be if there is a public right-of-way easement involved, then the garage would have to be set back even farther, and effectively, the building envelope is shrunk by five feet. The same would be true for single-family residences, so long as the garage is set back the full twenty, there can be a porch, there can be a living room, there could be a front room constructed inside the front yard setback for non-vehicle storage areas that would be forward, and that would actually be pushed back if that was turned into a public right-of-way easement. And so recognizing the need to protect that twenty feet for cars to park, the first half of the condition was agreed upon by all parties involved. Mr. White correctly notes the second half of the condition saying, hey, what happens if the county surveyor doesn't approve this? And I had some very productive and good conversations with the city attorney and proposed the concept, look, I suspect that if the city, if the surveyor will not suspect, will not approve the easement that he and I come up with, that would reflect that twenty-foot setback for the garages, that once we know what the surveyor's issues are, what their requirements are, one way or another, the city attorney or I could draft together with including staff in the process uh something that would appropriately reflect that restriction that would be shown on the plat. And the way the condition was drafted, we wouldn't necessarily have had that discretion, or we wouldn't necessarily, won't necessarily have that discretion because it provides that if the uh surveyor does not accept the easement, it shall be shown as part of the right-of-way easement intended for the public sidewalk. That will constitute a taking. If that happens, the buildable lots will be substantially reduced. There is not a nexus between uh the need to park cars in front of a garage and the inability to build a structure somewhere else on the property that is closer to the sidewalk than the garage. And so that would be an unconstitutional taking, which would entitle the applicant to payment of compensation from the city. No one wants that problem, we certainly do not, I don't believe that staff intended to create that problem. But if it is required to be a public easement, we could end up with that problem. And so all we are asking for is that the language be modified, as you see on your screen, to provide that if the surveyor will not accept the easement proposed, the applicant and the city shall agree on a means to reflect the restriction on the plat that's acceptable to the surveyor. And that allows us to work with the city attorney, work with city staff, make sure that once we know what the surveyor's issues are, that we can work through those issues and come up with something that protects the city by reflecting it on the plat and allows the flexibility that we can get that done without negatively impacting the ability to develop the properties. And so we're asking that this condition be modified in that way. The rest of the conditions we are fine with as drafted. As I noted, we're fine with a modification to the condition regarding the sewer system uh that provides that the applicant would pay for staff review time. Uh and we are um good with that. Uh I want to make sure that I touched on all of the concerns relay raised by the commissioners, the stormwater detention easement. You will recall that in the last uh hearing, there was a discussion regarding either a need to modify the sewer system or demonstrate that there's appropriate detention in the system, and it it provided, uh there was a a single line condition um that read, I believe, it it imposed some requirements regarding the design of the stormwater system that the city engineer agreed to modify on the basis of, look, if in the design phase they can demonstrate to me this is not necessary, then it's not necessary, but if they can't, then it will be. And there was concern that that should be done at the beginning, and we agree with that. The last thing anybody wants is to get halfway through a construction project and suddenly have to redo your storm system, because you got to dig everything else up, and it's not going to work. But that will have to be done in the design phase before the plans are ever approved, before there's ever any ability to start on the public improvements. So one of the first things in the process will be the necessary design information provided to the city engineer to confirm whether or not detention is to confirm whether or not detention is necessary based on the design of the system and the available detention within the system. So um, that is uh, should not be an issue. And that was simply noting why in the first hearing, a modification to that language had been proposed. And that was something that was discussed between the applicant and the city engineer and the city engineer signed off on the new condition and, and the condition presented by staff as well as it can uh is consistent with that and acceptable to the applicant. So there's no issue there. Uh, the last remaining issue that I show out there, and if I've missed anything, I'm sure folks will let me know is, was the question regarding the width of the bike lanes. And I'm fairly confident that's one of the things that uh Monte and A K S will address for us. And so I'm happy to answer questions now or wait for Monte to finish and then be available to answer questions for the commission as you prefer.
I think it would make the most sense and be efficient if we go ahead and let the A K S team uh give us their contribution. And then um we can, I'm, I'm guessing there may be some convo questions and answers from uh both you, Mr. Hoyt and the A K S team. I think that might be most effective for us tonight.
Sounds great.
Uh, with that, uh, A K S team, you got the mic. Thank you, Mr. Hoyt.
Can, can I ask that you speak up really loudly, please? It's, it's really hard to hear.
Are you asking me, Suzie, or are you asking A K S or?
A K S and, and yeah, if you could speak really loud.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll do my best. Um, thank you, Mark. Um, uh, thank you, uh, planning commission. Uh, mine is Monty Hurley. I'm with A K S Engineering. Um, I'm just going to hit on a couple of items here. Um, kind of follow up to uh what Mark said and, and items that uh Ms. Madrid and, and Ms. Terrell uh raised. Um, just for clarification and I, I believe I said this at the last meeting. Um, I met with the school superintendent prior to that meeting. And I met with the Y C T C uh, one of the Y C T C board members prior to that meeting. And in both cases, we talked through installing a sidewalk along that line and they were supportive of that. Um, I think uh what came up after that was the desire for a formal agreement like uh, um, Mark said. And, and we went ahead and we're going down that direction until we went and, and were able to redesign the project and, and move the sidewalk over. Um. I wanted to clarify also that uh I actually went to and presented at the school board meeting last Thursday night on this issue, presented the uh, street design we have along that line, um, as well as the sidewalk and uh talked through it with the school board. Um, and uh, in addition to the street improvement we're doing along there. Uh, we are going to build voluntarily build a sidewalk or a uh, a fence along that entire line. Um, and the school board was supportive of us installing a fence along that line. Um, and actually asked that uh we clear out the uh brush line that's along there is full of invasive species that I, I think might have been referred to as a hedge before. But it's more of a brush line that the school district actually wants removed um and a nice fence, nice new fence installed along that line. Um, so we intend to do that. Um, and, and so hopefully I provide some clarity and closure on that issue. Um, happy to answer any questions um you'd like on that. Um, uh, if you have any. Uh, also, uh, the, the last item I was going to address was the bicycle lanes. Um, I'm actually gonna defer that to uh Gordon Monroe, the, the city engineer there. I think that's more of uh a question for him. What, what would he prefer for travel lane and bicycle lanes? Um, we are good with it either way. Um, and I think that was it for my items. But again, happy to answer any questions you have of us on any of the items and uh just want to thank you for your time and appreciate your support of the project.
Thank you, sir. Um, I will, I think at this point we can open the floor for questions. Um, I would be willing to put some money on that. At least Suzie's got some questions, so I'm happy to let her start. And then if anybody else has any questions, just raise your hand uh digitally or in person. And we'll uh do a round robin, but Suzie, I presume you've got some questions?
Well, actually you're right. I do. So I noticed.
I should go to Vegas. Thank you.
So I noticed in the um Coalwells Arborist report. Um, it also specified that root pruning of roots less than two inches uh in diameter should be prohibited. Um, I think there's a potential for some bigger roots extending out beyond that twenty-five foot. Um, I'm wondering if we can get some protection for that. Um, and then also that they also, the Arborist recommended trees be monitored for three years. Um, and therapeutic care carried out if those trees begin to suffer from root compaction. Um, resulting, uh, resulting from the development. So I, I would um appreciate some assurances that we'll get that three, three years of monitoring. Um, the other question I have um about the stormwater surcharge. Um, does it, does the design of your stormwater happen before site prep begins? So that's just a question I have for you on that one.
Yes.
So the design, and so um, is it, so I'm guessing there will be more than one option that Gordon will be considering approving for that stormwater. So for example, if detention is necessary, um, will, who makes the decision of which one of those options would be approved?
I don't know. Gordon may want to answer this one, but typically we provide a design and Gordon either approves it or, or reviews it and provides recommendations to go in a different direction and we revise the design and then it's approved.
So in, in, in this instance, we know that we have potentially some redesign because of surcharging. And I, I would assume that A K S will have some discussions with me about here's, here's some options. Uh, they're going to have to go through some uh evaluation to see what will work. And we don't know it at this time. Um, so it's sometimes there's only one thing that can work and sometimes there's options. So that, that'll just be a back and forth between myself and A K S.
So my, my big concern is flooding resulting on neighboring properties. And um, we know that that can happen and it can happen sort of unexpectedly. So my concern is that this, whatever design happens, that it is very robust. And I, I guess I would like, as a commissioner, I would like assurances that neighboring properties will be um, very well protected from any flooding. And so that the detention is um adequate to accommodate our changing climate where we get these intense storms that happen. So that, that's my concern. And so a- as you review these designs, I'm requesting that you do it with um utmost thought to neighboring properties.
Yes, and there, there are design requirements. If you recall from the, I think it was last month, we talked about this. There are design standards for what flooding events that they have to design for. Larger events, um flooding occurs. We can't, we can't negate all flooding.
Mm-hmm.
But it will be designed to meet the design standards that the city has.
Okay. Um, and then finally, this is just a, a comment, just, and I, it's more of a comment just for the city to consider. This is a city staff comment. Um, we keep talking, I mean, this is probably the second or third time in different projects that we've talked about. The city of Carlton, um, considering this school, elementary school to be a park. Um, what, how I read that park report and how I wrote it when, when I did the park review is that um, until there's an agreement for shared maintenance, shared um responsibility for that park, it really isn't a park yet. So, and I know it does not affect this application because this application has no requirement for park space. But I would like, just as a point of, point of comment that um, we really think hard about forming that partnership sooner rather than later so that we can be honest about whether it's a park or not. That's, that's, um.
I, I would like to add to that because I think it was actually in the report that noted that access may actually be restricted to that based on the school district. But it, there was some kind of comment in it that kind of recognized, we've said this, but we know that there may not actually be access. Right? As schools get more security and more restriction about who's allowed on their properties and when it does become, it becomes a bigger issue. I mean, when I moved here, yeah, everybody was just at the park or at the, we, I took my little kids over there to play at the school play. But now it's fenced and locked and not everywhere, but yeah, I, I just want to follow up, but I also wanted to note that it was noted in the, in this.
Right. And then um, one thing, I think you're planning on putting street trees in. Um, and you're planning on using the city of Carlton's street tree list, which um, there's a very glaring error in this current city of Carlton, Carlton's street tree list. And it identifies hornbeam as Austria-Virginiana, which is kind of a, it, it's not a great tree. And it's actually hot hornbeam. And so the botanical name and the common name are mixed up in that street tree list. So um, if you're planning to plant hornbeam, um, I need, there needs to be a requirement that it actually is hornbeam, which would be carpinus caroliniana. Rather than Austria-Virginiana, which is what's being planted now, um, which is not hornbeam. It's hot hornbeam. So there's that. And then Gordon, will you comment on the six-foot bike lanes, please?
Oh, um. I'd be okay with six-foot bike lanes. That just gives some buffer where we don't have it now. And uh, the ten-foot travel lanes has become more of a commonly accepted travel width within a urban setting. So and I'll add, I, I have the, the street sections here. There, there's nothing that would include the minimum is, is five feet. And the difference there uh of the lane still need the, the ten feet or I think twenty feet is a requirement for two-way travel minimum. So, yeah, I didn't see a problem uh given the reading of the standards.
Thank you. Then, then I would like that added in as a, as a change or a variance to the code that we um have six-foot bike lanes, ten-foot travel lanes. And then I'm done, Anthony.
I always can count on you to provide the, the appropriate tree taxonomy. Um, it's always a tree and I appreciate that very much. Thank you, Suzie. Uh, do any, we have any other comments or questions for the applicant um through either Mr. Hoyt or A K S um, regarding the proposed conditions? Um. Comments, concerns or anything, or we can move along through the structure of our hearing. Uh, I know we've heard from Suzie, Noel or um uh, Annette, I think has fallen off for right now, but um, anybody else at city offices? Hearing none and seeing none, I will gladly invite our next phase, which is the uh open opportunity for public testimony. Uh, we'll set a time limit, an initial time limit of two minutes per person. If we have individuals like to speak for, against, neutral. Um, and then we'll provide an opportunity for the principal proponent to provide a rebuttal. Uh, at this time, I'd open the floor for any proponents, anybody who is speaking in favor of the proposed uh matter before us tonight in this quadgy judicial hearing. Speak now or hold your peace. I trust, is there anybody there, Amy at City Hall that would like to speak as a proponent?
Uh, no, there is none.
All right. I don't see anybody in Zoom land. So I will invite next uh individuals who would like to make or provide testimony and opposition or as an opponent to the proposed um subdivision here this evening. Amy, is there anybody at the city offices that would like to make a presentation in this time period?
Uh, not, no public is here for anything.
Okay, makes it easy. I don't see anybody in Zoom land. Finally, an opportunity for someone who's neutral or undecided, who would just like to make a comment in the general sense. I trust Amy would let me know if there was anybody at city offices that had just a neutral undersighted bent to them. And I don't see anybody in Zoom land. So with that said, we don't have any public testimony for this evening. Um, since we don't have any proponents and opponents, we won't have any questions from the floor of the planning commission that would be directed through me. At this point, we will close the public testimony portion of this evening's hearing. Receive right now any final comments from staff and a recommendation. Um, I think there were at least a couple of points that I think uh we would benefit from revisiting with staff. Um, the one that immediately comes to mind uh dealing with the public easement language and whether or not um, it, the compromise that is proposed by the applicant um could be workable. It sounded like, from my perspective, that it met the, the underlying nature of the goals, but provided the flexibility to the parties. But um, this is where we obtain our very wise counsel from our city planner.
Okay, and I mean, we do have uh also our, our city attorney. Uh, I was not privy to the earlier conversation today between the applicant's attorney and city attorney. But um, uh, so uh, just a couple of things that uh we're, we're noted here. Um, uh, once again, uh, we're game for trying the um uh, how the condition reads here as, as far as sort of a building sep- uh, uh, separation easement. Um, I, and um, you know, really this, the, what has been identified here in, in yellow. Again, this is uh from the proposed conditions on page eighteen, exhibit A two of the, of the staff report. Uh, really just proposes uh, well, an extension of what the applicant has already proposed. Uh, this is a reminder to the commission, the applicant is requesting a modification to the, the street design standards placing the sidewalk within a public easement as opposed to uh actually putting in public right of way. So as just as a reminder, it is the applicant's request uh, that a portion of public street improvements go into an, an easement. Uh, I just want to make sure that that is also reflected in the record as we have uh, the applicant's attorney uh saying things as far as takings and things like that. It's important to acknowledge how the applicant has uh created this very thing that we are suggesting that may just be extended. Uh, so that was the thought process on that. Uh, that being said, uh, staff uh is agreeable here. I think the, the, the city attorney has anything more on this. Uh, the general idea as we are, are all trying to, to, to do is to minimize the vehicle encroachments into. And if any change here accomplishes that, uh, that, then, then we've done good. That, that's what, what we're trying to do. And so if it is the, you know, the, we've yet to have that conversation with the uh, the Amhill County uh surveyor. We'll see. I, I know in a different county, um, I, I would have to say that, that, that there's a the question of whether or not you can do a, a side of a se- building separation easement for one particular uh uh, uh, different county of uh, uh, county survey would say no. So that, that's, that's the, the impetus of, of this addition was, was more so uh based on um conversations with a different co- uh county surveyor and, and uh, and there's been others that, that have said something like this would be fine. Uh, the, the more creative the easement, the better. Uh, so it, it can, it can vary on the personality, uh, unfortunately, and, and less on, on a reading of law sometimes. So, uh, but anyways, I, I, I think staff is agreeable to what, uh, should the commission decide to approve tonight? Uh, there is uh, the slide eleven that uh, the applicant has provided with some alternative language. Nice sort of wrote down to, again, if it comes down to a motion of, of approval. There are a couple of things uh that, that were mentioned. I do want to uh just state for the record. Um, uh, Commissioner Terrell's uh comment regarding the trees and a three-year period of, of monitoring. Um, really, this is a question of whether the applicant uh is, is making a, a good face and effort here to a, address uh, uh, tree preservation through the period of construction. Uh, beyond three years, it might be that uh we have a, a new uh homeowner there. The applicant's now away of, out of the picture. Uh, the conditions that we've structured here are binding solely on the applicant and not any future owner of, of the property.
I see.
Um, so this is one of those things, uh, staff will observe that uh, one of the one of the trees at least is right in the way of where the eventual uh construction will be for the continuation of of a street. So it's not ideally located for for future protection. Uh, these trees uh that I mean, maybe that the coals uh have emotional attachment to the trees and would like for them to be uh healthy and that's understandable. Uh, but I I will observe that the coval property is inside the urban growth boundary of the city. Uh, it is zone, the same zone that the applicant wants have. Uh, there are the agricultural holding uh zone uh there that was changed to residential. Uh, just uh not not jumping to evaluate this app, this this the property. But it it there's a possibility that the that this property is developed and I have seen it before where there are uh great efforts to save some trees that are later have to be removed because of construction. So um, so just uh, just just a just a note uh that we're we're looking at also uh the future potential streets continuing and that sort of thing as well. Uh, as far as the elementary school and the unchanging is, yeah, I I think that the staff report uh was just sort of answering to the the uh applicant's thoughts on the interest of the commission uh for the last meeting. Uh, as far as the um, you know, the green green space and open space and saying, hey, there's a school uh to the north. And we were just clarifying that, well, uh, they're 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 all reality is this what uh we're faced with today and that there might be some limitations to 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 use as uh occurring throughout the nation, un- unfortunately. And and yes, there used to be a much more cooperative relationship between the schools and the cities. Uh, but still a lot of programmatic things that that occur uh for for kids uh at at the school. So uh, those opportunities are still there. Uh, certainly, yeah, we uh we have some conditions here too that uh I I'm thinking the applicant is agreeable to and that the um staff is agreeable to. And so at at a point after uh the commission deliver uh uh deliberation here, I do have some part things uh to some conditions and sort of noting what uh has been stated here as far as questions of staff and the applicant or the commission. And so at a point where um through a de- deflation, the the commission wants to make a motion, I can kind of identify some some conditions uh for that purpose. And that's it.
Anything else? Understood. Thank you, sir. Um. All right, we have now uh arrived at the deliberation of the commission period. Um, we'll focus our deliberation here. I know it's an extension of our our last conversations, but focusing on the criteria. There's a couple of uh specific items that we need to address. And um, if if anybody is comfortable, we have the framework for a proposed um set of motions to be found on page fifteen. And to the extent that this document would need to um in the in the proposed recommended conditions of approval found at page seventeen labeled as exhibit alpha two, to the extent that that needs to be adjusted and modified. Um, pursuant to our deliberations, we will document that verbally and then ensure um that we are all on the same page when we do take a vote. So I will open the floor. Um, perhaps we can go alphabetically uh by last name, and I think that means we are starting with Ms. Amaya.
Um, are you asking me if I have any additional comments or questions?
Comments, concerns, deliberations um or considerations for uh our discussion, or if you're in a position where you feel comfortable, um, you know, making a motion, you can do so, but you could just say, you know, for the minute, you're for the time being, I'm 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 comfortable with what we've heard and I'm ready to hear a motion, but you can defer to everybody else just to make sure everybody gets their two cents.
Sure. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm I'm still learning, so forgive me. Um.
You're all right.
I am, I I think uh I believe that staff has done a really thorough job in there. Ooh, excuse me, my dog is in the background. Um, has done a really thorough job at everything that they've provided to us in the packet. Um, and the applicant has done a thorough job as well in meeting the conditions that we've asked them to meet and provide that additional information. So I would be comfortable hearing a motion at this point.
Excellent. Um, I see that uh Commissioner Madrid's not there. I think uh, that would mean G, Robin Gekk is next.
I would uh concur with Commissioner Amaya that staff and all of the parties involved have done an amazing job and presenting all of this. And I feel satisfied as well, would be comfortable with a motion. Of a free go.
All right. Moving along to Commissioner Nordstrom. Uh, any thoughts or comments or concerns? Or other contributions at this point?
I just wanted to say I really appreciate um how much the applicant listened to us and really tried to address um the things that they heard, even when they maybe didn't by code explicitly have to. Um, so I really appreciate all that work and and then the coordination with the city staff to really help address those things and clarify the issues very succinctly. In some cases, like this isn't part of the code. Like, let's move on. And in other parts, hey, we've gone back to the code and I think this is the best way to proceed. So I just I wanted to say I, for me, this has been a really productive extension from last time and um I I just want to say I appreciate everybody's work on that and um I I I'm ready to hear a motion as well and um uh, I I I think the work has made my decision easy.
Uh, Commissioner Terrell?
Um, I'm actually comfortable too with the addition of the six foot bike lane, ten foot driving lanes. And um, I feel confident that our attorney and our city planner will work out the um the intricacies of the agreement that Scott outlined. Um, so yes, I'm comfortable with proceeding.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Terrell. Uh, and then to to sound like truly like the skipping CD or the the repeating record, I am in a position where I would concur because of a couple of intricacies between the uh both the motion and the proposed uh or the recommended conditions of approval found on page seventeen at exhibit alpha two. I would um, I would invite just a a line by line. Um, perhaps a colloquy between our our planner and uh Mr. Hoyt or AKS uh or and or the two of you. Um, as we look at this, starting at page seventeen, because we've got this framework for our recommendations there, I think um going through there, making sure that we have established. Um, we'll call it the compromise or the the adjustments to what is recommended as a condition of approval. And then on each of these subcomponents, if there's any question or differentiation between staff and AKS and Mr. Hoyt, um, that we try to hash each of these out, we come to a resolution, each of these subpoints so that um, once we've, we we all are confident that we know exactly what we're voting on, then uh, we'll form, I'll formally invite a motion as can be found um on page fifteen with the caveat that in each one of those proposed uh motions, it would be subject to the verbal modifications that we are going to confirm on a line by line basis. Does that sound like an efficient and effective way to make sure we're all on the same page?
Yes.
I see two heads shaking and a a couple of bobbing heads at our uh city offices. Excellent. Uh, so with that, we'll, let's just start on um number one. Prior to final plat approval, um, as we have it written here, there's a couple of small elements. I think the first one that that might be subject uh to adjustment would be at one sub J. But um, I I guess I'll I'll leave this to the applicant to let us know of a proposed modification of what we're looking at here um on a on a one by one basis under subsection or under number one, any of the subsections there.
One J is the first place I have any notation that there would be any concerns, and that's the one condition we did ask be modified. Uh, and we showed the slide there. What we would propose is that in the second to last line that uh the words a building separation be deleted and replaced with the agreed upon easement. And then that the
I think I recall that slide. Would would it be possible for AKS to pull up that specific just slide just so that everybody can see it? And then we can have a um, just a, we'll call it a not even a voice vote, but just a a confirmed understanding there. Thank you, AKS team. All right, is everybody at the city offices? Um, and Commissioner Amaya able to see that?
Yes.
Okay, I I think this represented a a reasonable compromise here between the parties. Is there any concern by any of the commissioners about um amending what we see on the top of page eighteen to ref- and the bottom of page seventeen to reflect this as a replacement condition of approval at one sub J? All right, no objections. Excellent. Or for, sorry, uh, of course, I welcome a perspective from our city attorney.
Uh, so I did speak with the applicant's attorney on this language and with the planner. Um, I think this adequately protects what we're trying to protect against while incorporating um concerns about what the surveyor may or may not um accept. But we we're going to get that setback reflected on the plat in some shape or form that doesn't totally screw up the whole development.
And you're comfortable, Scott?
I, yeah, uh, from from what I I've got there, yeah, I I'm I'm making notation here to to what's what's shown here. And I think as far as the the motion there, you can you, there is reference there to PowerPoint slide uh uh number eleven, I think. Yeah, there it is. It's number eleven. So so we have it as part of the record. If the motion wanted to, you could just say um what what's shown on the applicant's uh uh, so so the motion would have to sort of incorporate that, but just making a reference to the applicant's PowerPoint slide number eleven there. And I'll make sure I get a copy of that. I gotta get the whole thing to the record anyways, so. Yeah, so, yeah, so that's
I'm also keeping a couple notes of these.
Yeah, yeah. So we're we're okay uh with that and um, yeah, yeah.
Excellent. One sub J is uh understood and acknowledged. Uh, Mr. Hoyt, um, next in line, sir.
I believe the next thing we have is a modification to three, three A two, which would include that the applicant has agreed to pay for the staff time for the city staff uh review time for the study.
I trust uh all the commissioners, city um planner and the city attorney are on board with that adjustment.
Yes, if we're trying to go in number order, though, I believe one sub T is where we should mention your type of pain with.
We're of nine.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's Bob will pay.
Okay, one.
Sorry to
All right, we can, we can back back up to one sub T. Thanks for the bringing that to our attention.
And and we would just propose there that it be modified to read bike lanes to Wilson Street and Third Street shall be six feet in width and be painted consistent with city design standards and finish the rest of the sentence. I was gonna do that separately, but I think it's better to add it here. I thank you, Tyler. Good suggestion. Should should we also say in ten foot travel lanes? Yes. Thank you.
Any comments, concerns, or otherwise uh provisional approval by the commissioners? Uh, I'm blurry, but that was a thumbs up. Uh, excellent. Um, next, does that move us forward to three A sub two? Uh, or is there anything above that from the commissioner's side? Or the city side? Okay, three A sub two. My understanding is that we're just confirming the the agreement for the applicant to pay for the study is the addition there. Is that correct, Mr. Hoyt?
Uh, the applicant is agreeing to pay for the city's review costs as well as the study. The study, the study expenses can, in the existing condition, it would just be added. Um, the study would be reviewed and approved by, reviewed by the city at the applicant's expense.
Understood. Thank you, sir. Uh, any, any objection to that by any of the commissioners? Hearing none, seeing none. Excellent. We'll move forward. Mr. Hoyt?
That's that's all I see is the issues that would need to be modified from our perspective.
Excellent. Noel, I think this has been, like I said, uh, and like everybody had indicated, very productive, very helpful. Really appreciate the opportunity for the applicant to have uh uh, given us just this much more succinct and helpful information. Uh, with that, we have all indicated that we are uh in a position to accept a motion. As your chair, I can't do that, but um we have the motion options available on page fifteen. Um, if you were happy with the three items that we just made reference to on the record, uh, you could move to approve based upon subsection A. Oh, or excuse me, um, subsection B, as modified as we've just done. Um, and then we do have that time extension. I don't believe that there were any objections to dealing with that procedural component uh as well.
I move to approve sub twenty-three oh one based on the findings in the staff reports dated March thirteen, twenty twenty-three and May tenth, twenty twenty-three, subject to the conditions of approval. And the staff report dated May tenth, twenty twenty-three, um, with the caveat that subsection B one J is um modified as shown on the applicant's PowerPoint slide number eleven. Um, two T bike lanes will be six feet and ten foot travel lanes um per city code requirements. And three A, um, the city review of will be paid for by the applicant. I further move
Thank you, Susie.
I further prove
Sorry, go ahead.
I further move to approve the extension of the preliminary subdivision approval time limited to one year.
Excellent. Thank you, Susie. And as a clarification, that was one sub J and one sub T. Uh, we, I think you had said two, but I think we all understand that this is exactly what we just reviewed. Um, we have a motion to approve subject to the modifications that we've outlined here on the record. Invitation for a second?
Second.
Excellent. We've got a motion. We've got a second. We've got quorum. All in favor. Raise those delicate, beautiful hands. Excellent. I see it has passed unanimously among the individuals that are still here. And I see commission, I was just about to say Commissioner Madrid uh is gone, but I see her hand as well. The matter passes unanimously.
Connectivity.
Hey, as long as you're here for the big dance, that's all that matters. Uh, excellent. Thank you all so very much. Thanks uh very much on behalf of the commission and the city to the applicant. Looking forward to this responsible um, you know, targeted development in the community that as you recognize, there was a delay on this application to allow the city to focus on um the medium type of housing that we have found to be both market rate and a little bit more affordable. It's going to be a wonderful addition to the community. Uh, we're going to have the Chad Davis team, AKS, and possibly even Mr. Hoyt before us again in the coming months and years to deal with some of the underlying and subsequent issues, and we will look forward to that. City staff will work with the applicant and we will finalize a uh written decision uh according to the timeline. Naturally, there's some appeal periods, but I'm I'm guessing that we're able to move forward and there's no questions. Uh, any questions or comments from the uh the commission on this matter? Otherwise, we can let our applicants enjoy their evening. Hearing none, seeing none. Thank you very much to the applicant, AKS, and Mr. Hoyt.
Thank you for your work and consideration. Greatly appreciated.
Thank you. We'll look forward to seeing you all again soon. All right, well, we have finished the majority of the dance party, but we have an opportunity for broad commissioner comments, anything that is not on um, the agenda this evening. Um, it's a beautiful night outside. Other than commenting on that, I have nothing to add. Uh, Commissioner Maya, have you got uh anything to add, new business? All right. Anybody at the city offices have any comments, questions, or otherwise contributions for this evening?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I I I just wanted to uh comment on uh the staff is sort of monitoring a lot of the um proposed bills before the state legislation, uh, and some that that could uh impact the the city here in the future. Uh, some of you have to be uh that are pending uh of approval, but um uh, what um, if if there is an opportunity What if if there is an opportunity on the next agenda and the first foreseeable. Agenda here, I know that the June twelfth meeting was mentioned. Assuming that the the commission has has that scheduled, it's an opportunity for us to sort of. Provide just kind of a summary of some house bills and Senate bill, a lot of it all mostly pertaining to housing. But just kind of to go over those and maybe I've got a meeting with Shannon. Here on on some things that we're working on as far as code updates and things like that. So it would be something that Shannon and I would first work and and maybe as well. But yeah, some interesting bills out there. I'll just kind of say that that we can have maybe just a work session or something like that.
I would love to see that.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. When is the end of the legend? Because we're in the odd year, so we get the long session. When is the anticipated end?
It's in June. Somewhere here. I think they're just finding.
Before or after the twelve?
I was kind of, I was trying to see if there was something I had on my calendar, but.
I could do a quick Google search here, too.
Yeah.
June twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth.
June twenty fifth, okay. Only because I'm I'm generally aware of the intricacies and the idiosyncrasies of the legislative process unless. Any one of us is in a position where we are going to engage in the legislative and advocacy and, you know, advocacy function. Perhaps it would be best to defer this from June twelve to July ten, then we got to sum sum up to. Really kind of get an idea of what has passed so that we're not having any extraneous or superfluous items that. Otherwise might not pass by the end of the session. I I do think it would be a good idea for us to remain apprised, but so that we're getting final information and any enrolled bills as opposed to. Things that are still in the oven, that might be a good idea. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes, yes.
Excellent. Perfect. Thank you, Sir Planner, Sir Planner White. Yeah, exactly. That I think that'd be a really great contribution and to the to the point that you just mentioned, I wanted, I had a note here just to. Reflect that we had last meeting, updated our schedule from a certain Monday of the month to the second or to the third to the second. So our next meetings are June twelve, July ten, August fourteen. September eleven. October nine. November thirteen. And December eleven. Will just, you know, until we all get used to that schedule, I I'll probably mention that at the end of each meeting coming up, just so we got it taken care of. I did mention earlier that my wife and I are expecting a kiddo. I don't think it is going to impede this schedule. We're looking at August twenty five expectation, so there shouldn't be any problem, but. Yeah, I I do remember our our former city attorney showing up with a giant beard after a few weeks and just kind of looking harried, so. I I will reserve the opportunity to be to stand corrected, but I I don't think that will impede participation. But that's why we've got a co-chair in the event that'll happen and of course I will let Susie and the city team know if if that will be the case. Otherwise, I may have like a little, a little dude hanging on my shoulder.
Love to see him.
Other than that. Yeah, oh, no, I'll have him there. I'll give him a little gavel. It'll it'll be fun. Thanks, everybody, for for everything tonight. And I know this was nice and. It it's helpful to to revisit these things and get this type of contribution. I think we've done community a good service. By diving deeper into some of these questions and getting some of the necessary adjustments. So I commend each of you. Especially the the two of you that are newest on this team. It's not easy and it does take some time, so very much appreciate it. With that said, the only thing before us left is a motion for adjournment and it is open to the floor.
Actually, before we adjourn, can I just ask how we get that error in the street tree fixed?
Or the what?
The error that you noticed in the street tree list. How do we get that fixed?
Yeah.
I mean, since that came up and it may not come up again.
Yeah. The botanical leading doesn't match the common name and then nobody knows what to plant.
I think. It didn't, it didn't require. Formal council legislative action, did it, to to update this street tree list? So perhaps that could be something that would be just internally updated with the city staff, but correct me if I'm wrong.
There is code requiring street trees. I don't think the list specifically is a part of the code. It refers, the code refers to our street tree list. So if there is error in the street tree list, I think it's probably something that we can. Repair.
And so I, yeah, I actually requested that when Kyle was still. I kind of brought that to his attention and the mayor and I think Shannon. So I can send you the the proper names again so that we can choose and then we can just. Delete, add the right one.
Yeah, so we can put a little notation at the bottom.
Sure. Okay, sure. We could do both of them, absolutely, but it's, yeah. It's be good to have it.
Yeah, I think that's helpful. Thank you.
I move to adjourn.
There's a, there's a first. Do I have a second?
Second.
I see a second. All in favor, wave those beautiful hands. We'll see you all next month. Thank you. Thank you again. Have a great night.